The zoning board of adjustments Monday, August 2nd, 2021 meeting. It is 1:35 PM and we do have a quorum, plus one. Item number two, review and take any action related to the minute records of the regular meeting held on Monday, June 7th, 2021, and July 12th, 2021. Board, have any questions on the minutes? Motion to approve?
I'm just asking to approve both the June 7th and the July 12th minutes for 2021.
Let's have a second. Second, vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. Seven zero. All right, item number three, ZBA 21-09713 East 36th Street, Americitech Homes, single member district number two, Tom Thompson, a request for approval of a variance from section 501.8 of the zoning ordinance to allow for an 18.5-foot front yard setback in lieu of a 25-foot setback for a home along Crockett Street within the single-family residential RS1 zoning district located at 7...
Are you on the wrong minutes maybe?
I'm reading the wrong thing, aren't I?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, let me get you another one.
I got it. I was wondering why you kept looking over there.
Last month's.
Let's try, let's try this again. Did we approve that one, by the way? Oh, we turned them down, oh God. We were in a bad mood that day. All right, let's try this again. Item number three, ZBA 21-17, 3049 Red Bluff Circle, Forbes, single member district one, Tommy Hebert, a request for approval of a variance from section 509.3, a zoning ordinance to allow an eight-foot tall fence to be located within the front yard in lieu of the maximum height of four feet within the single-family residential RS1 zoning district located at 3049 Red Bluff Circle.
Thank you Chair Cortese, members of the ZBA. Jeff Fisher, chief planner, our first case today is 2117 3049 Red Bluff Circle. So the applicant, there's a, you can see there in the red, that's the subject property. So to the west, there's an existing rock wall fence that was built and there's openings in it. And so this neighbor wanted to, the applicant wanted to essentially also build a fence along their west side. So that way, the people to the, to the further west, which is number four there, they're opposed to this today, wouldn't be able to see over into their, into their yard. So it's essentially to do what they've already done. The problem is that, that rock wall fence back, we've gone back to the early 90s in our aerial photos, was already built. In fact, some of it actually encroaches past the property line into the, the right-of-way on Red Bluff. There's about a 30 to 50-foot variable public right-of-way before the actual street pavement that the city owns. So all those lots get access through that. So they can't, they can't put a fence into that right-of-way at all. Now, that existing one, I guess, was already either grandfathered or was there for, for so many years. So their request today is not to go into that right-of-way, but to build it eight feet tall up to the property line. And the zoning ordinance in the front yard, 25 feet back, only allows up to four feet. So essentially, it's to allow an eight-foot fence along the west property line instead of a four-foot fence. This is in district one, Tommy Hebert, the Lake Nazworthy neighborhood. We mailed out nine notifications within the 200 feet and we received two responses in favor and two against. The two in favor came in late Friday, so I passed those out to you as well. I've tried to, there were some pictures that were sent from the different applicants. I've tried to combine some of the pertinent photos in the, in the presentation as we go through it. But the two in opposition, one is the neighbor that has the rock wall fence at number four, and then there's another neighbor at, at number nine, and then the two in green are in support.
And the height of the, of the rock wall fence is how high?
That's a good question. So it's, it's eight feet until it hits the, the carport, and then it, it, it tapers down to about five feet as you go in the front. So this view that you're seeing here is only five feet, but it does climb to eight feet as you get further back.
And that would be on the, on that side over there.
That, that's right. So there's a good example. So once you get kind of halfway through the carport and you go further back, it's eight feet, and then it kind of climbs down to five feet. And I guess the, the issue essentially is this applicant, you can see those, those bars that kind of cut down even further. So those neighbors come in and then they can see through their property. So it's, it's really just for, for privacy reasons. But again, part of that fence itself, the rock wall fence, was there for so many years. But it, if it was built today, it wouldn't comply either. And so that's the, the problem.
Is one allowed to plant shrubbery along there to create a, to create a, are you allowed shrubbery to grow?
Yeah, we, we've had that.
Above the, the light? Would that be in compliance with them?
They could use a hedge wall. We, we, we've interpreted in the past, and we're going to clean this up and we bring a fencing ordinance change hopefully later this year. But we have interpreted if they use a landscape berm or a rock, or a wall, or a fence, it all, essentially, it's the same thing, it's still a fence.
It's the same, it's still creating a barrier.
That's right.
Visual barrier.
That's right. Let's go through a couple more pictures. So this is looking west at the, at the neighbor's fence. So since the carport that the applicant has has been there also since at least the mid 90s, and council had put in a policy in the zoning ordinance, if the, if there's an existing carport, provided they don't screen any sides of it, and they haven't, they can essentially keep that, that carport itself is, is grandfathered, legal non-conforming. Therefore, staff is, our recommendation today is that they can fence up to the end of the carport where that pole is, but not the front seven feet of their property and definitely not in the right-of-way because they would need an encroachment. We think that's reasonable since most of the, that adjacent property owner, they're going to park their cars basically not, at least at the carport line or further forward towards the house. So there's really, we don't want to get them all the way up to the front. But given that big right-of-way, we think that's a special circumstance. And then if you go to the back, past the carport, they've already fenced the back, that wood cedar fence. So essentially, what you're going to see is in this picture, I know you're going to turn around here, but they would have an eight-foot fence, the cedar fence that would go along parallel to this rock wall fence. It would go all the way along like this. So we're okay with it up to the carport because that's, again, that's a legal non-conforming carport, but we're not okay with filling up all the way to the front yard. Even if these guys did it, we think these guys are either grandfathered or also didn't follow the rules. So that's kind of where we're at with this. So there's, there's a good example from a bird's eye view. So they just want to put in the, in the yellow area and continue that fence along to the front. So some... Yes?
But they want it to the property, they want it to the property line, but you're saying, you're not saying go to the property line.
Correct. We're okay where that purple, where it currently ends before the carport. We're okay with them extending it to the end of the carport because the carport's pre-existing and that would screen them from the neighbors when they go to park. We're not okay with that extra seven feet in the yellow here where they want to extend it to. There have been variances on the street to allow up to six feet from the front yard with a similar situation. So that's kind of why that's a good base point to kind of stop it around seven feet.
So if, so if they were to request for, for six foot, then, then a six foot would be allowed?
So then a six foot would be allowed or no, four foot?
Only four feet.
Only four foot, okay.
And, and the reason for the eight feet is the carport kind of tapers. It goes between seven and eight feet underneath. So eight feet essentially screens from, if they're pulling into their carport, this way they don't have the neighbor looking in over them. But again, and I'm not, just based on past precedent, we didn't want to allow, it could go all the way up to the street. But I think if they put, and they can either attach it to the carport or just run it along the side yard right against the rock wall, either one. Okay.
So the yellow is, what y'all want to do, what staff would like?
The yell, the yellow is, let me just check here. The yellow is what they wanted, so what they want to do is they want to fill in the yellow and then they also want to fill in, so basically, they want to go from the purple all the way across to the front property line. Staff only wants to allow the, allow it to go between where the fence is now and the end of the carport.
And then, and then up to where you, where the yellow's at?
Not including the yellow.
Yeah, not including the yellow.
Not including the yellow. Where's the rock wall on the picture?
In, in relation to that?
Yep. So the, keep it in the wrong one. So the rock wall actually goes into the right-of-way. So it essentially starts somewhere towards the front of the property line and it goes all the way back to the end of the carport. And then from there, I'm not sure if they've got the rock wall all the way down to the lake, but I can go back to the picture, but I know that, that this owner's fence, their cedar fence, is along the purple. So they've already built that. So we're okay, go ahead and build it all the way to the end of the carport, just don't go into the yellow, the front yard setback.
But there already is, but there already is an existing four-foot rock wall in that yellow area.
Or fi, five feet, yes.
I mean, five foot yellow.
That's right.
To the, to the property line or the right-of-way?
To the property line and into the right-of-way.
Yeah, that was grandfathered in, it's been from a long time ago.
And again, I guess our case today is really to focus on this one, but from our research, our aerials get really fuzzy before the 1990s, but at least up to the 1990s that, that rock wall was there. So we think it was at least, you know, non-conforming or legal non-conforming to that point.
Can your pointer go to this TV here, Jeff?
Yeah, I can. You can do that. Well, it looks like it only goes on there. Can you see it if I do that, you can't, right?
I didn't reflect there.
Is it okay if I answer some of those questions?
Yes, they're going to have a public comment in a minute, sir? Absolutely.
Can you zoom in on this one?
You're going to have to, I'm sorry, you'll have to turn around. It's just the way the technology's been set up here.
Some rock walls in front of the yellow.
Well, rock wall is the yellow.
Then what I'm, I'm wanting to just make sure that I understand.
Yep.
The purple is an existing eight-foot, the wood fence we saw.
Correct, correct.
And they're proposing to go from the end of the purple, technically, all the way to the end of the yellow.
That's correct.
But staff is saying that they need to stop at the end of the carport poles.
Correct.
Right.
But the rock wall fence follows all the way to the yellow.
Yep.
That's correct.
And it's an existing approximately five foot tall.
Approximately five feet. And once it hits the middle of the carport, it goes up to eight feet. Okay.
Is the, is the length of the yellow, does that still, does that get into the right-of-way?
No, it doesn't. And it's, it's about approximately seven feet.
Okay. So what does staff's, make sure that I understand, staff is saying not go all the way to the end of the yellow toward the street. Can you tell me, Jeff, why exactly?
Yes, I'm going to breeze through this really quick because we've, we've kind of already discussed it. We believe there is a special circumstance only to as far as the carport because again, that carport was, is legal non-conforming. It was built at that time when council allowed the exception. So we're okay with the wall going up only as far as the carport, but not all the way to the front yard. And, and I think the reason for that is they, this owner made a good, made a good case. Well, the rock wall already goes to the front too, but if something else is grandfathered or non-conforming isn't, if we did that for everybody, then obviously, everybody would put their, an eight-foot high fence or a building up to the street. So that's why we, we stopped it roughly at that point. But that, that concludes our presentation. So we do recommend approval of an eight-foot tall fence, however they want it, wood, metal or masonry are the materials in the zoning ordinance, up to eight feet. It can be opaque or not opaque. They'll probably want to obviously make it opaque with two conditions of approval. They obtain a, because it's higher than seven feet, they'll need a permit from building permits. And again, that's just that reiterates what we said, the fence isn't extended closer to the front posts.
Mr. Fisher, is there any, I mean, I drove around out there, I didn't notice anything. Are there, are there other existing eight-foot fences that encroach upon that area out there anywhere in that general vicinity?
I didn't go to the north side of Red Circle, but I went to the south, the south side of the circle and there wasn't any that I could see.
I didn't see any, yeah.
At least not eight feet. Like I said, there were two other variances on the street. Unfortunately, our, our case history folder, that we were having some issues with our maps. And so I had the research done luckily and I documented it before the, but the case files I couldn't access. But the two variances were for, I think one was six feet and one was 13 feet in the front yard for, for carports and buildings, not for fences.
Okay.
And I believe the applicant is here and maybe some other members of the public.
Any more questions for Jeff?
No.
Thank you.
Open for public comment?
Thank you, Jeff.
Come on up, sir.
Some of the questions that y'all were asking, I think I can answer.
Sir, would you state your name?
Oh, David Forbes. I'm the, I'm the owner of the property that we want to build the fence. There are two other fences in, in our neighborhood that are approximately seven foot in height. That's the neighbor immediately to the east of us. They built that fence for privacy. And then the lady on the east of them, immediately on the east of them, built a seven-foot privacy fence. So there are two other fences that are up to seven feet. The questions about the rock wall, the rock wall was built about 1962 and it, it has various heights to it. In front of our carport, it's eight feet, slopes down, goes up to seven, and then slopes down to the pillars that are five foot. And then between each pillar is, is an iron bars and it's 30 inches of rock and then the bars on top. And originally, we, we were wanting to go all the way to the front, to their corner, which is 22 feet off the street. We will agree to go to the carport, but we would like to be able to slope the fence down then to the, about 24 inches past the property, 24, 30, two to three feet past the property to, to be able to slope it down to make it look better than just chop off an eight-foot fence.
Mr. Forbes?
Yeah.
Just a couple of clarifications. So you can, it probably, it may or may not have been clear from the presentation, but we only want the eight-feet, foot fence to stop the carport. You can still build it up to four feet past that point. And, and then the second point is, once you hit the property line though, you won't be able to extend it past that because that's a separate process outside of ZBA. You'd need a, an encroachment from city council.
And, and the, the property line from our carport is seven feet out. And then our carport is 55 feet from the street. So yes, that would be agreeable with us to slope it down to the property line. We'd like to go a little further, but if we can't, we can't.
Is sloping allowed? Is sloping allowed, Jeff?
Not right now, no. So he'd have to do eight feet. Our recommendation would be to eight feet and then right at the end of the carport, he'd have to go immediately down to four. He could start the slope earlier, but then that's probably not going to help him because then they can still see through the carport at him. That would be up to y'all if you wanted to make that condition at a, you know, I don't know how you'd say it, 45-degree angle and have it slope down.
Would that work for you to go stop at eight foot and then go to four foot? It'd still give it a clean look?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
If, if we could slope it down then and, and be four foot at the property line.
But what you're wanting to do is incorporate a slope, which is, which encroaches upon the ordinance of four foot, is that correct? You're, you're wanting to go at the end of the eight-foot fence line, you want to, then you want to take a graduation down for so many feet, which is not what the staff has been agreeable to you, that you can drop it to four feet right there and go down, or...
Yes, my understanding, the staff is recommending that we stop at the carport.
Right, the eight foot at the, at the end of the carport.
And then if we, if, if we could slope it...
How many feet do you feel you need to slope it to the appearance you want to accomplish?
From the carport to the property line of seven feet.
So you want to put a, so you want to put a graduation slope, seven feet extending from the end of the eight foot where, and then where, where it hits the four-foot rock fence?
Yes.
Okay.
It's probably, there's probably even a better one, right there. You can see where there's the four pillars there, so we would stop...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, just state your name, thank you.
Leanne Forbes. It's the fourth pillar in there and so it would immediately stop there and then slope down to that third one if you guys would allow us to do that. And that's, as you can see, it's almost to the end of the, the carport there. And then it would gradually slope down to that third one end, so coming in from the road, if that makes sense.
Third one counting, third one counting from right to left?
Correct, yes, sir, right to left.
Counting from right to left.
So the fourth...
The third one, that one right there.
No, that would be the second one, so go one more in there.
Right there.
So that, it would end at that pillar or before if you guys wish for us to...
So you just want to put some kind of a sloping fence line from the, the second pillar to the third pillar?
It would actually be from that fourth, it would be the fourth pillar in. So I think they're trying to, so you see the fourth pillar there, David Sean. So it'd be, there's the fourth pillar in.
Right.
The property line is approximately right there.
Yeah.
It's seven feet to there out, it would be about right in here.
Aesthetically, that's what we're asking for, so that it slopes down to that one, so that it's just not cut off. And, and if it does have to be cut off and then go the four feet, that would be fine. But if you guys could allow us just a little bit to make it look a little better.
What we're looking at is, from this point, it would slope down to there.
To right there, yeah.
And is a, one quick clarification, is the property line east of that post or is it right on the, because it just, it just can't go past the property line, it can go up to the property line?
Property line is approximately right there.
So you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to build it past that point?
Okay, so from that point, it would be sloped from there to there.
Okay.
Would that be agreeable?
Unless the committee agrees to take it there. That would be a few feet past the property line.
And I, I think our attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but they, you wouldn't have the authority though, I was mentioning earlier, to go past the property line through this process because the ZBA only has the authority to the property line.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you.
I'm calling the fence right now, the wrought iron.
Those, approximately five feet.
That's the, the rock and the...
Those columns, those columns are approximately five feet high and you can see that fence, the iron fence goes about the height of the columns.
So the columns still from the ground up to the top of it's five feet?
Yes.
What if you had the option, I'm sorry, I'm trying, do you have a different picture that is, has that carport more front and center? That was a different stat one. So it kind of cuts off at the property line almost, is that correct? Is that picture?
Seven, it's seven feet in from the property line.
So what if you, thinking about it, what if you just extended, can we extend, could we extend an eight foot all the way to the column so that it didn't cut off mid and you have like two feet of iron? You had like eight foot all the way to the rock column from the carport, so it extends out?
You're talking about this column?
The fourth one in, yes.
Yes.
Yes, so the difference between your carport and that column, what if you did eight feet all the way to there and then you dropped to four the rest of the way after the column? You know what I mean? So aesthetically, you wouldn't have a gap of bars sitting there at four feet.
You all would have, could have, you all could make that decision, yes.
I have some questions for y'all. You turned your mic off, you were on.
Okay, is the travel trailer there all the time?
Yes.
Yes and no. It's been there probably three to four weeks now. It, it was there for quite a while. It was hooked up to electricity, water, sewer. City had them, had those people move it. They did move it, but then it's been back. We hear the generators running, I don't know if it's hooked to water or sewer or not, I don't know. Yes, it's there, it's been there about three to four weeks.
It's occupied, occupied.
My understanding is used as an office or either that or it's not being occupied.
In that other view, when you're looking at your property from the street, that there's a red roof, I hope we get back to that scene.
I was waiting for them to answer.
Oh, did you want to?
Oh, excuse me.
No, that's, can you do it just right back?
Back, okay. The red roof property on the right, is that part of your property or the neighbor's?
No, that's the homes that west of us that were putting the fence.
Are they that close or is that just the way the photo looks?
It's very close.
Yes. Our, our house is approximately five feet to the rock wall and then their carport goes all the way to that rock wall. It's very close. And, and you can see our houses, their house is in an angle, slight angle to ours. So yes, what, what we would like is, is eight feet to that column would be great and then slope down to the property line.
The slope down is subjective. We need more, we need more data or from five, you know? We, we wouldn't know how to make a motion. We can't just put a motion to slope down.
Could you go to the four?
I don't have any problem going to that, I don't have a problem going to that column.
And then go down four and...
And go down four and...
And go across.
We need, we need, we just, we need something more specific besides slope. That's, that's the problem we're, we're going to have.
Okay, now you're talking eight feet to that property line, right? Or that column?
Yes.
Okay. The property line is approximately there. Right in there. Like I say, from this point to the property line is seven feet. And from here to there is a couple of feet, two to three feet.
So it's going to be a pretty steep slope because you're only going to have about five feet left, so it's going to have to, I guess, come down.
Yeah, but we can, we can, by the time we hit the property line, we can get four feet.
Okay.
Squeeze down to four feet.
Would, would it be a...
If we, if we give you to that column, you're just going to have to drop it down to four feet after the eight feet. But like I said, we, we need something more definite than slope.
Eight feet to the column and, and slope would stop at four foot at the property line.
Well, no slope.
No slope.
Eight feet and then four.
Drop to, drop to four.
So you're going to give a little privacy over to that one there now?
Oh, yeah, I understand what you're saying there.
It will, for sure.
It'd be a vertical rock, four feet to the property line.
Correct.
Okay.
And then to get the, the initial other part that we hope to get, but then we would progress further after today if you guys approve what we're asking. No, I'm just... Okay.
So Jeff, if they were to go for an encroachment and obtain an encroachment, would they come back to ZBA and doing a, a new case if they wanted to do a height different than four feet, if they want an encroachment agreement?
No, so once, once you, so the ZBA would approve up to the property line today and it would just be, you'd submit it to planning and the application would go to city council only. So city council would review it. There's a legal agreement, if, if they approve it, that you'd have to enter into with the city.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Well, that must be all, no. I don't know. And I've got a pretty good handle on that thing.
One thing I could ask you because is it, I mean, we all have privacy, but can you elaborate on extenuating the circumstances that, I mean, you showing people looking at you or...
Well, we're going to get into here, here, he, you say, back and forth.
Let's not go there.
I will, I will say this, it is, it's a safety thing.
Good.
If that's sufficient.
Any more questions?
After the meeting, if you don't want to, I'll, I'll... If, if you read the oppose, everything he said is true, but there are circumstances that make things different.
Three sides to a story.
Exactly.
Three sides to a story.
Well, yeah, right hand, left hand, no one knows what's going on in the middle. Yes.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Jeff, I have a question regarding that, the travel trailer there.
Jeff, I have a question regarding that, the travel trailer there. Is that a, is, is that travel trailer there, if it's being lived in and used in an office, is that, is that, is that in compliance with?
They're, they're here if you guys want to ask.
Oh, they are, okay.
They're here if you guys want to ask them.
I'm just curious if it was, if it, if it runs into a?
Last bill is not part of our agenda.
Huh?
It's not part of our agenda.
Oh, it's not, okay, no, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes.
All right, thank you.
More public comment?
Colleen Covey, I am the opposing next door. The travel trailer is not lived in. It is not in office. My son and them did take it, they take it in and out. He does not hear generators, it's the air conditioning. It's hooked up to the electricity to maintain the interior inside, because they keep their belongings in there. It has never been hooked up to city sewer or water. We had a gas tank last winter on the front of it. We rented a big propane tank to keep the heater going. And so when LeAnn called the city on that, we were told that that's not in compliance. So we came and removed it and we hooked it up and started running the heater on the electricity. So that's what they hear next door. As far as her safety, she's perfectly safe. A lot of those are lies. We had, we do not cuss across the highway, across the fence.
Could you speak up, please?
We do not cuss across the fence, we do not yell obscenities to them. Actually, we ignore them.
Mrs. Covey, may I interrupt you a second? I hear what you're saying, it was in the report, we're, we're talking about the fence part.
Yeah.
Let's get to that.
We, we, we would like it to stop at the pole.
Okay.
There's, there's no reason to go further than the pole. The electrical line in the picture is the property line. So they really, I mean, if you go to the pole and then go to that first pillar, there's not enough room to slope it. And I keep my three-year-old grandson, he's out there playing. So as far as LeAnn's privacy, when we come in and out the carport, yes, you see them if they're in the carport. We've lived there since 2012. We used to get together, do all kinds of things. But LeAnn has her privacy. You see how close the houses are, yes, you see each other. You saw the fence in the backyard. Even though she built an eight-foot fence, we still see them and they're in the backyard. I can see them up when they're on the deck if I'm down in my backyard, as they can see us in our backyard. We don't interact with them. We don't speak to them. So that, for her privacy, now, it bothers me what she wrote, but her privacy, we allow them privacy. That's.
Why does it bother you if it doesn't run the fence to that column there? What's, what, what about the fence bothers you?
I go outside in the mornings, I look at the sunrise, I look at the moon, we can see the Fourth of July fireworks. There's part of the lake across the road that I can see without, if she puts in a fence or an eight-foot fence, it's gonna block my view. I can watch the, we watch the airplanes land, my grandson loves to see the airplanes, as do I. We watch weather, that's the east side, I go out, watch storms on the east side. So I, I'm in the yard a lot, yes, I am. I'm, I'm, you know. But as far as going to the end of the carport, that would stop like when I pull in, because I do pull in, and would not see her if she's in her, because she feeds her cats under her carport. And that's usually what she's doing when she sees us pull in or pull out. But, and then, I mean, you look at the fence there, you have a eight-foot, and actually, eight-foot's gonna take it above his carport. His carport's only about seven feet. So that's gonna look awkward. The eight-foot wall they're talking about is the carport, at the end of the carport, then it drops back down to seven. And there is a rock wall all the way down to the water, but it's only, maybe parts only two, three feet, where she put the privacy fence. And then she stopped it at the tallest, then it goes back up to about seven feet. And she did, they put that up there for that. But, but if you look, it's just gonna look funny with an eight-foot fence. And then all of a sudden, you have a slope where you go eight-foot, four-foot, and then you have this little rock wall sticking up. You know, if that's what they want, that's what they want, but.
And this was, this was difficult to measure. Excuse me. This, Ms. Covey's partially right, I think this was difficult to measure, because the, the height clearance under the fence, at least when I went out there, I measured to the middle, and then later I got a call from Ms. Forbes. So I think it does taper, so it is eight feet.
It's, it's eight feet.
And then it comes down a bit.
And then it comes down to seven feet.
Sure.
And then there's a six-foot portion in there. And then you can see where she put the carport on, head on, I put flower pots up in there, trying to keep her privacy, because she does have a camera on their front porch, that I'm sure aims into ours, because they have such a wide view. So I'm thinking maybe if I put flower pots, she can't see us and it makes her feel more comfortable.
How tall is the existing fence here? Is that?
Well, it's, it's different.
It's, there a rock wall?
No.
That right there is five feet.
That's right, so it's?
And then, and then it goes up where that one flower pot is, it goes up, that's about five feet, and then it goes up to six feet under my carport.
The height of those columns right there is five feet?
They're five feet.
Okay.
That's right.
Those are five feet. So I mean, if you put a four-foot there, then you're gonna have a foot of rock wall and.
Yeah, then you'll drop back down.
It's not gonna help them, I mean, you know, because it's still five feet.
And we don't know how tall the carport is?
It's eight foot, part of the rock wall.
That's right, it's, it's eight feet, what I had measured it, my understanding is it's eight feet closest to the house, and then it tapers down to about seven. And then it's seven, six in the middle.
Yeah.
Seven, two.
Seven, two, okay.
Jeff, could you move back to the picture that had the purple and the yellow, please?
And, and the fence David was speaking of, or Uncle David here, actually, next door to Hambury and Lynn, it's a seven-foot fence, and then they had to taper down because of the property line. They could only go so far, and then it tapers down to the four-foot. So it's not a seven-foot fence. And then the other property is my daughter who just moved in, her privacy fence begins at the end of, her neighbor, he put in a six-foot cinder block fence. And so her fence begins at the end of his six-foot fence. And his doesn't, his goes to the city liner. So hers doesn't go actually out to the street. Hers stops, hers goes behind the, her neighbors on the east side.
So my question is, Ms. Covey, the, the purple is, is the eight-foot cedar fence?
No. No, the, the eight-foot cedar fence does not go all the way that far. It goes about half that way. Actually, yeah, maybe not even half. See the, we call it the G building, the building with the star?
Okay.
It goes just right past that, because then you see the rock wall is already about seven, eight foot.
I should've said cedar fence slash rock wall, because she's right, it goes halfway down and then it continues as a rock wall.
Now, on my side of that fence is, is a rock wall, but it's, for some reason, they made it short, and then they built it back up. I, I don't know.
Who, who built that fence?
Um, I'm, David, who was the guy that owned that?
My mom broke the fence.
Oh, no, not the?
Who paid for it?
The cedar fence.
That's a good-looking fence.
The rock wall, or the, the cedar fence?
Not the stockade looking top.
But, but yeah, so see, then they stopped it where the rock wall goes tall again. And then towards the water, it drops off and it's maybe three feet. Or, I don't even think it's four feet.
You're gonna stain it, the same color? Put the same color?
It'll be, it'll be the exact same.
Okay.
Yeah.
That has a stain on it, isn't it? That's a stain, that's, yeah.
So basically, the request was to go all the way to the end of the rock wall, which cannot be done because of the city's right-of-way. And to the property line is the only way that we can allow that.
And we are.
The, the wood fence goes not all the way up, according to that other picture.
No, the, the wood fence, that wood fence right there, because she had, they had already put in another privacy fence, because David's deck has steps, and then there's about a four-foot rock wall that we actually used to climb back and forth and, and visit, because people with cousins and stuff and have one big party. But they put the privacy fence up, and that's seven feet now. And it goes up and, and meets another part of the, the eight-foot fence under the carport, and then it goes down to seven foot, and that fence meets the seven foot. So on top of our eight-foot, there's a seven foot that goes parallel with the driveway on the back. And then it goes up to eight feet under our roofed carport, and then it's seven and six and five. So it's not, yeah. But, but, but we're, we're okay with going to the end of the pillar, because basically that would look, that would actually look better than trying to slope it and go four feet. And, and then we measured only what, five, five point two feet from the, the actual electrical line, which is what they consider the property line, to the edge of David's carport.
So you are okay going to the pillar?
To the pillar. We, we would be fine, happy with that, because that would give LeAnn peace. Because, like I say, I've, I've put in bushes, I've got hedges down there, we're trying to put in some of those trumpet vines to, you know, I, I was doing the flower thing, trying to, to eliminate some of this.
But you're okay doing a graduation?
No.
Step, no.
No, just to the pillar and stop it.
Just to the pillar, and that's it.
And then stop it.
Of course, you would be allowed to put a, a four-foot fence.
They, well, that's up to the city and them, but that wouldn't, that would not help her. That's not gonna eliminate anything. I mean, I don't think, it might, because we drive a pickup, and my pickup's higher than the five-foot fence now, so, but that's.
Jeff, when they get a fence permit, they, do they mark property corners? Do they make sure they're stopping at the property line and stuff for that four-foot fence?
I believe so. Permits is here too, but I believe that's correct, and the scale drawing shows it, yep.
Okay. Anything else?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any more public comment?
Before you vote? Come up, come up to the, speak into the column.
Please come to the microphone.
You gotta come to the microphone. We gotta make record of it.
I would recommend before you vote, and for my, so I would know also, which, which column are we talking about? The one that you pointed out?
The one right from the post of your, of the carport. I don't have a real pointer.
Can you show that other?
To the right of the carport.
That.
Okay, a while ago, I think it was, is there, can we put that other picture of the fence, the wall?
Sure.
Okay, yes. Well, back, back.
Back, okay.
No, not that one. That one.
Okay.
Okay.
Where's the pointer?
From, from the carport, that's a rock wall, and I, and did you not, yes, that's the one you mentioned, yes.
And no taper, so it would stop there?
And then go straight down, and then four to the property line.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I meant to the carport, not the pillar, the carport. We can agree to the carport.
Okay.
But that, yes.
So you, you, you said you want the pillar?
No, I said the carport.
Correct.
The carport post.
That's right, that's right.
Carport post, okay.
Well, and aesthetically, if you guys will allow us to go to the post, it's like we were talking about a while ago, so that it's not just cut off and not in the middle, it would look better on both sides in order to go to that pillar versus at the end of the carport, if you guys would be agreeable to that. And in addition, it would give me that extra little bit of safety that I'm looking for.
And right now, even without the ZBA, from, from the, assuming, let's say they go only up to the post, you could still do four feet, so it would be about halfway up that, that iron bar area. You could still legally do that, you just can't go higher than, you just can't do the taper, but you'd be within a, a foot of that, because that's five feet tall, so you could go to four legally.
Okay, okay.
Any more public discussion? Foreclose it? Thank you. Want to talk? Have we talked enough? We know what we want to do?
All right, so.
I'd like to make a motion.
Let's make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the eight-foot fence to the first five-foot pillar. And then four-foot thereon, because it's still, even four-foot privacy fence is gonna give a whole lot more privacy than the iron fence now, because it's opaque. And then run that all the way down to the beginning of where that eight-foot line in the map that showed the purple to the, to the yellow, I think that's, that's the, whatever we call it.
That's city right-of-way.
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way is the yellow.
The, the yellow is the right-of-way.
Yeah, this side of it. Is that the right-of-way right there on the line?
Yes.
The yellow line. Okay, to the right-of-way, to four-foot privacy fence, with the conditions they get permit for the fence. And I do that because I think privacy is important, especially in a recreational area like the lake, because the trailers there often, that increases a reason to have a little privacy. For safety, whatever the reason may be, I think it keeps the peace, there's a lot to be said for that.
So Ms. Cunningham, it would be eight feet to that pillar, and would you, maybe I didn't catch that, would it be a taper down to the property line or no taper at all?
No taper at all, just go eight foot.
So your decision would only be, say, eight feet to here, because everything past that, they could do four anyway. You wouldn't need to include that in your motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Jeff, could you clarify on that map? That white portion adjacent to the yellow, is that not their carport roof? And then that small, dark area to the right is the seven feet that we're talking about to the property line? Is that not the white carport roof?
Yes, I believe so. That, that's, so I know that doesn't look like seven feet, but it is.
So, yes.
Excuse me, I know you called off all conversation, but no, that's grass.
Right.
That's brown, wintertime grass.
Is that, is what you're saying, is, is that white area right there, is that the roof line of your?
Of your carport.
Of the carport, right?
Yes.
Does your roof have a white roof?
You see a top where it says eight-foot cedar fence, and you see two parallel lines going down? The one on your left is pretty well the, goes to the end of the carport. It's a lighter, you see the darker roof, then a lighter, and then you see a little dark spot, then the white. That white is grass, that dark spot is a shadow to the left, Jeff, right to the left, 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 left.
Left.
Left more, more, right there is the carport.
That's, okay.
That's the carport right there.
Yes.
That's a lot larger space, than I was thinking.
Are you trying to confuse things? You just, you just, you know?
It's just hard to see that that lo, long of a space is seven feet compared to the house as well.
Uh-huh.
Maybe the, it's maybe just the imaging.
I still know that my proposal is still valid, because that would take the eight-foot wall out past even the traffic trailer.
Yes, but you don't need to mention the four-foot fence, because that's allowed anyway.
But the eight feet only go into that first post, first five-foot post.
But if she put the four, if in her motion is four-foot to the end of the right-of-way, or the beginning of the right-of-way, I think you'd have to have that in the motion, because that's city property.
We can't do that, can we?
Right?
Correct, you can't.
No, you can't do that.
Yeah, okay. So the four-foot could only be from the end of the, the end of that first pillar that's after the carport.
To be to the right, to be, to be to the right.
To be to the right, to be, to be to the right.
And so here's the pillar.
Right there, yes.
It'd be right here, the fence to right here and then four feet.
And then four feet that away.
To the property line.
To the property line, which is, which is com, in compliance with city ordinance. Yes. Is that, is that right, Ms. Cunningham? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, all right. Is it all clear as much? No, we gotta do it again? I'm confused. Want to do the motion again? Want to do the motion again? Clear the motion.
Your microphone's off. Your microphone's off.
Eight foot to the post.
So the motion I make is that we approve eight foot to the first pillar.
To the end of the, see, that pillar is just wide. You want it at the front of it or the end of it?
Front of it.
Okay.
So it would be the end of where the metal is now.
There's metal on both sides of it.
Yeah, but I'm saying on this side.
Right here.
The right side or the left? See, that's what I think.
North, south, east or west?
This side of it, whatever that is.
Which direction is it?
That would be the east.
To the east? Is that east?
That would be east, right?
I think it's, it's pretty clear, I mean, you can just say to the south, the southmost end of that first pillar.
Yeah.
We want to be careful because again, I know it doesn't look like it, but it's approximately seven feet, so, um, you know, the property line's probably somewhere over here, we just, we don't want to allow it too far, because then you don't want to make a decision that ends up encroaching into the right of way, but I, I'm fairly confident that's back from the right of way.
Okay.
All around north, south.
Okay, so that would be?
That would be north, south.
North to the right.
North to the right, good. So, so you take it to, to the?
To the south.
To the south side of that pillar.
Yes, south side of that pillar. With the stipulation they get a permit.
Yeah. Yeah, permit.
Is that clear?
Everybody understand all that? Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, I was trying to clarify, so, all right, so the first column past the carport, we're doing a, a variance of eight foot. And then to the lot line, they're allowed four foot anyways, so that doesn't need to be part of the motion.
Right.
But if that's otherwise correct, I think we're clear.
You got it?
That's exactly what I said.
All right, there's a motion on the table. In just a second. In just a second. Any more discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any nays? No nays, passes. Six, zero. Keep on thinking there's seven. Let me read the minutes again.
Okay.
Can we take a break? There are seven of us. Pass seven, zero. All right, what item are we on? Item on the agenda.
Four.
Item four, ZBA twenty-one dash eighteen, nineteen oh two, Austin Street, Randall, single member district number five, Lane Carter. Request for approval of variance from section five oh two point B, the zoning ordinance to allow for a front yard setback of ten feet in lieu of the required minimum twenty-five feet in the light manufacturing ML zoning district located at nineteen oh two Austin Street.
Okay, Zach Rainbow, Planning and Development Services. As you said, uh, this is a variance request to locate, uh, some canopy structures approximately ten feet, uh, from the right of way, uh, or from the property line. Um, this is located northeast of South Oaks Street and east of Highland Boulevard. Did I get that right? I may have those streets wrong. Anyways, it's just over half acre, District Five, Lane Carter.
Wait a minute, it's, would you go back northeast of South Oaks?
I, I had, I, I had.
I was thinking to say there, I hope somebody didn't get close over there.
Yeah, I, I had, I had those streets wrong, but it is nineteen oh two Austin Street. Randall Motors is just across the street.
Good catch.
Got it.
Again, George Randall's the applicant. Uh, I've already mentioned, uh, the variance request, we sent out notifications, received two in favor, uh, there were no comments associated with those, just in favor box checked and none opposed. Here is the concept plan submitted, uh, with the application. Um, as you can see there, uh, these match what the variance request, uh, if granted, would look like. Um, there's the square footage of the structures, uh, the larger one, um, approximately covers twenty-four spaces or vehicles, um, the smaller one is eighteen spaces. Uh, these are intended to cover, uh, vehicles, uh, for sale. Again, the main Randall Motors is across the street. Some pictures of the property, it's a, it's a vacant piece of property now, um, it is Some pictures looking across the street. Here's a picture looking at the, uh, Randall Motors, uh, main facility. Again, notifications received two in favor, uh, none in opposition. Staff did review this, it is not consistent with the purpose statements of the zoning ordinance, the general land use and development character of the immediate area. It was also reviewed pursuant to section two oh seven F and D, uh, those are listed and spelled out, uh, in your staff report. Um, there's six, uh, let's see, six factors in determining, uh, the appropriateness of any variance request. Uh, some of the main ones are hardships and peculiarities. Um, from a strict interpretation, staff was not able to determine, uh, a hardship or a peculiarity. Again, there's more detail in the staff report. Here's the, the allowance of variances, uh, you see this pretty much every time a variance comes before y'all. Staff does recommend denying the variance, uh, to allow for the front yard setback of ten feet in lieu of the required minimum twenty-five feet in light manufacturing. Um, being that it's a vacant piece of property, staff feels there's some redesign of the carport structures, moving them with, within the lot, um, they'd be able to accomplish the same amount of coverage spaces, um, and still meet, uh, the front setback of twenty-five feet. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How much right of way is there?
I believe it is ninety feet of right of way. Sixty feet is required, um, and there is ninety feet.
Can you go to the?
Yes, I can.
Please, sir. Okay, the ninety feet is?
It, it's kind of hard to delineate there, but what they show as that street there, Austin Street, um, it's ninety feet from one side of the property to the, or from one side of the street to the other on the property lines, there's ninety feet of dedicated right of way.
Okay, from the, from the property in question to the edge of the street?
From the, from the property in question to the other property line on the other side of the street.
On the other side of the street.
So there'd be twenty feet, so the street width is fifty, so that leaves twenty foot on either side for utilities and parkway and.
So there's a twenty foot right of way on this side of the street?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Where's the twenty-five foot line gonna be?
The twenty-five foot line would be, I believe, is indicated by the dotted line that crosses, dissects the buildings.
Okay, I see that. So what staff is saying is if you, if you move those buildings back?
If you moved them back, maybe some other sort of realignment, uh, turning them a little bit, just readjusting them.
You can still have the buildings and meet the code.
Correct. That's staff's interpretation, um, that the applicants, I believe, are here to speak to their, their argument for it and their reasoning.
How long has that property been vacant? Not long.
I honestly don't know. Not sure.
It's been a long time.
Before I was born.
I'd start to say, yeah.
They've been parking cars on it there for a long time.
Yeah, it's owned by Randall Motors, I believe.
Correct.
And has been for years and the reason it's not built on is for what it's used for.
Yeah.
And so this, these covers would cover their car inventory, so.
Well, I know that just by looking at some of the, um, other buildings along Austin there and probably their grandfathered, but some of them are just almost right on the street. Uh, and isn't there, um, Zach, isn't there, um, um, some kind of utility, electrical?
There, there's a, in the parkway, and I believe on the front of their property, the reason they, they, they originally asked, uh, to be right up to the property line, but there is a ten foot easement.
Yeah.
Which they can't encroach into. And in the parkway, I believe that's what's being shown, identified there with all those lines, north to south, are utilities.
These in here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Public comment?
Good afternoon, my name's George Randall. And I've got a letter here that I'd like to present to everybody so we could have a permanent record. Maybe.
Make sure they get one, I can get one last.
They can get one last.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I can hit you with it.
Thanks, sir.
It's just beating me wide. If you didn't tell, I'll take it back. You're good.
Oh, you gave me two, unless somebody, somebody run it. Yeah, in case you run out short, run short to somebody else.
We would like the planning board to, or the zoning board to approve this variance. Number one, these canopies are not opaque, so you can see through them. Um, so blockage of road is, is not any issue. Number two is there's no cross streets. The nearest cross street, if you look on here, if you walk up there, is three hundred and thirty feet, which is Avenue Inn. And then for that to even be in the view of the canopies, you have to walk two hundred and seventy feet away, uh, down to the east of Avenue Inn. These are kind of a necessary thing for me. Um, we've sustained over two million dollars in hail damage over the last five years, 1.1 last year. My insurance premiums have gone up four hundred percent over the last eight years, um, with one hundred thousand dollar deductibles. So that means I have to have a hundred thousand dollars worth of damage before the insurance company will kick in. So unless there's a hundred thousand, it comes out of my pocket. Hail damage, we're all familiar with that. It, it happens, but when you have a large amount of cars, you almost have to shut your business down for thirty days because you have to get adjusters there and then you have to go through the PDR process, which takes another thirty days. It's, it's devastating for us. We look at this picture right here, um, the front canopies, we, we originally asked for seventy-seven parking places, but by the time, uh, we've got all the easements in there and, and everything like that, down, I'm down to thirty-four. Um, the front canopies, if we move those further back, um, I don't know if you noticed between the railroad and my property, I guess that belongs to the railroad. They never mow that. So if you move those canopies back and I park my cars along weeds this tall, it promotes so much crime. And then when they do decide to mow that property, debris and everything like that is, is awful. The other thing too is that all of our cars have motion detectors. When the trains go back and forth, you're gonna get complaints from everybody because all these car lights are gonna go on and the horns are gonna honk and it's gonna be terrible. The other thing too is that, that front canopy, if you move it back, they're gonna have to unload cars, uh, big semi trucks are gonna have to be in the middle of Austin Street to unload cars. And if you don't think that's a safety hazard, then, then it is. Um, but there is no line of sight, it is a necessary thing for me. It is a necessary thing for me. These structures will be aesthetic, they will match my building, uh, they're professionally engineered, I've got the people with SK Engineering here, um, I'm open to questions.
How big are they? Are the canopies, I'm sorry?
The canopies are gonna be, the first canopy is gonna be five thousand two hundred eighty square feet.
Which, which with the length, what, fifty, that'd be?
The, the poles, there's gonna be, uh, I might invite y'all to discuss the poles, but they're gonna be humongous poles dug deep down into the ground and they will be behind that dotted line. The only thing that's gonna exceed that dotted line are gonna be the roof edges and they won't come to where the ten feet easement.
So, and this is gonna be a metal, a metal structure?
It's gonna be a metal structure.
Or is it gonna be like All American, I mean?
No, I've got those across the street, they're not as effective, so these are gonna be a metal engineered structure.
I can definitely appreciate your concern for loss history. I see it. And people, people don't understand why their rates keep going up, but one hailstorm sets us back years.
Mr. Randall, can I ask, um, when you said about the, uh, large trucks that do haul the, the vehicles in and out, because I'm sure they have to come in and bring them and maybe take some out. Right now, uh, what you do on that lot, I think, is you, I've seen trucks over there unloading, and you use your own property to do that rather than the street itself.
Correct.
Would this specific layout with some of that in the back allow you to continue to do that or not?
And that, that's the way it's kind of, has to be that way because you have to have that much space to get those big eighteen wheelers in and then they have to back out. And of course, there's a parking lot with, uh, Dakota Coffee right there behind me, so there's plenty of room to maneuver, but, you know, if we move those back, there's a slope on that, uh, property and you could not unload a car on that, so they're gonna have to be in the middle of Austin Street stopping traffic.
So you're thinking they're unloading behind?
That's where they currently unload, right there. So there wouldn't be a change of process. I, I would not have to retrain truck drivers, which.
And you're, you're thinking positive that when you get your new inventory in in December, you're gonna have a nice car.
Yes, you know, I usually have about fifty to seventy-five cars over there, but, you know, with the computer chip shortage, this is about the perfect time to build something because I don't have anything and, and, um, you know.
Yep.
And it would be very permanent from the way you've described the, the metal and the engineering of this and the poles.
And aesthetic.
So it would be very well done.
Yes, and, and aesthetic, because it's gotta match the colors and everything of my building, so.
Wow.
Is fencing gonna be put up?
Nope.
No, it's gonna be all open?
It's gonna be all open, because, you know, we, we're gonna move, be moving cars around and stuff like that, so fencing would be pretty rough. And I don't want to get a permit for that or go through the zoning board.
Do you have to have a permit for the canopies?
You will have to have a building permit for the canopies, which I believe.
It's gonna be tight though.
Comes next.
Okay.
And, and the work process has already started with that because I said the, the initial plan was for seventy-seven and, and we, with different sewer easements and different things like that, we're down to thirty-four. If we get any less than that, then it's not worth me doing.
When I went down there and looked at individual, somewhat.
Yeah.
Would there be any visual interference with traffic or anything along that line as far as, you know, as far as?
It, it doesn't appear there would be any interference with traffic or visibility.
There wouldn't be any.
Can, can I refer to a, a map right here? And you can probably see it from there, but the way this parking is, is this parking lot actually doesn't follow the street, it, it goes to the, to the right of the street, so it gets wider and wider. So these canopies, one will be going along the street and the others will be facing the dealership, so, and like I said, you have to walk three hundred and thirty feet from that last canopy to the signal and two hundred and seventy feet from that signal to where you can even, it, it blocks you, which that gives anybody ample opportunity.
Would this create any kind of a citizen, uh, crosswalk area as far as traffic going back and forth? Is that gonna create a, an issue or a safety concern of any sort?
It hasn't for thirty-seven years.
Thirty-seven, okay.
Is that?
George, what's the gap for in between?
That's a sewer easement.
Okay.
We were gonna have canopies all across, but then I have an easement also to the, to the north of that, so we had to kind of break it up into two pieces, so.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't.
Go ahead. You're gonna pave it, right? It's gonna be paved?
It's already paved, but we're gonna come back in with the oil, with, and, and, and put the oil mixture down.
Put a top, yeah.
So, um, I guess my question is to Jeff, just, the, the ten foot versus the twenty-five, that's kind of what, um, we're, oh, I'm sorry, not Jeff.
That's okay. I'll let Zach address that.
Zach. Um, the ten foot versus the twenty-five, the required twenty-five, um, this, um, map, uh, gives the ten.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason for staff, um, uh, wanting, uh, to approve, uh, to deny it is because it doesn't do the twenty-five.
Correct.
In doing your basic, um, a decision on this, were you aware of what all would go on, uh, activity wise on that, uh, small piece of land? Because it's kind of a pie-shaped actually and there's a railroad track behind it.
Right.
And Dakota, one edge of Dakota is almost on the street. Of course, it's like I said, well, it goes probably grandfathered. But even the ones across the street, not necessarily the dealership, but the other ones, a couple of those are pretty close. I don't see them being 25. So aesthetically, can you tell me, with this being 10?
I don't think it was based, our decision wasn't based on the aesthetics of it.
Okay.
It was just taking into consideration consistent development and just, those are the rules set forth by city council. And so from a strict interpretation...
Okay, strict interpretation.
Strict interpretation, yes.
Okay. Then my question would be something like this. And I don't know how, how it would affect either way. But you've got 25 you need. 10 is proposed by Randall. So you've got 15 more that would make this dotted line, moving it back, which would keep them from being able to unload the cars except on a public road. So is there an in-between? Is there a...
That's what we're here for.
Yeah.
Well, I know, that's what I'm asking. Would that be something, oh, no.
Good morning, Russell.
No, I'm right next to the question. Thank you very much, Zach.
Well, and that is a great conversation. And if you look at it, this property, Russell Gully with SK Engineering. This is a very unique piece of property and most properties are typically deeper than they are wide along the frontage. And so really, if we take out the back utility easement and the 25-foot building line, we only, we lose about 40% of our property to these easements and building lines. And so it really hampers the use of this. And as Mr. Rainbow alluded to, Austin Street right-of-way is approximately 90 feet wide. The requirement is a 60-foot right-of-way. So if we went to the city and asked to abandon the right-of-way, we would be asking to abandon 15 feet of right-of-way. So we could come and go through the long process of trying to abandon Austin Street and then we'd have to tie in everybody else on our side of Austin Street. So the 15 feet really is there. It's just kind of in right-of-way.
I thought it was 20.
Well, I guess if I do, yeah, it's about 90 feet. I think the 20 feet was about where the road sits because it's not perfectly centered within the right-of-way in and of itself. So if we looked at what the available right-of-way is, is about that 15 feet. So we kind of feel like what we're asking for puts us about, if Austin Street was truly a 60-foot street, we would be at the 25-foot building line and Dakota would be in a better location where they sit. And so we just, and so many buildings along there just have built up because I guess Austin Street was a county road years and years and years ago. And so it's just kind of, that's been the recognized right-of-way through there. And so there's really never been a process to, for all of these to go in and abandon that. So really, we're asking for this. We feel that it allows them the best use of their property. Potentially in the future, maybe we could put additional covering on the backside of this if things change. If we have to move them back, then it really does hamper that ability and also the ability to offload cars. And you know, you ask about the gap. I think you were, I don't know if you're asking about the gap between the two buildings or...
Yes, I was.
And that's a conversation we may have and we may ask for that flexibility that potentially we may create that as one long building. Because we were kind of looking at maybe leaving that open as circulation, but we may go back to the table and if it could be helpful, we may join those all together. So we'd like, I guess, if you're so kind to approve this variance, just allow us the ability to have that, you know, no matter how long or where we wind up placing our buildings, that we could be within 10 feet of the right-of-way with our setback for any building along that. We have some sewer utility easements that we can't be in. We'd like to be in, but you know, we can park cars on them, but the city said, no, you can't put buildings over those easements, so. And the way we set it up, we have a single column in the middle of this large canopy. So there will not be structural supports out within that 15 feet kind of that would be in the building setback. So visually, you would really see nothing but the cars that you currently see anyway.
Basically, the way the cars are sitting right now, you're basically, you're still, everything's going to be viewed the same. It's just going to have an extended cover over it.
Right, and really, we'll pull the cars back because currently they can kind of park them up to the right-of-way line.
Oh, I see.
And so really, it's going to open the corridor up because we're setting 10 feet off.
Right, because you're setting them back, you're actually going to move the, you're going to move the vehicles backwards and give more vision if that's a concern.
Yes, sir. If we have to move the canopies all the way back, well, that leaves us enough road to, room to park another, more cars to displace. So potentially, we're moving cars back out there and that could kind of close down your view. So this really helps move that back.
That's basically it.
Okay.
Any more questions? For Mr. Gully or Mr. Randall? No? Thank you, Mr. Randall. Thank you, Mr. Gully.
Oh, thank you.
Clear as mud.
He's always...
He did good. I'm proud of him. I'm going to use you as an engineer one of these days.
I know.
Well, I would like to make a motion because I don't want to waste any time. Randall's always does things first class and I think this, we've got to protect our employers and their investments. And at the price of new Cadillacs coming out, almost $150,000, I can certainly understand why his investment needs to be protected. So I move to approve as submitted.
Maybe he'll give us a discount.
Maybe.
We have a little leverage right now, don't we?
Can we possibly get that in writing?
That's only seven.
The great Cadillac.
There's only seven of us here.
CBA.
A smooth 25%, it's pretty easy to...
25%?
Or 30%.
I don't know. Did you hear that I seconded?
Oh, no, 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 I didn't ask for it. Do we have a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Say, say, okay. Any more discussion? Do that, right?
Nope.
Thanks, Ma. Let's have a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass is 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item. Number five. ZBA 21-19, 203 North Ave Street, Huggins. Single-member district number three, Harry Thomas. Request for approval of variances from section 502. B of the zoning ordinance to allow for front yard setbacks of zero feet in lieu of the required 25, minimum 25 feet for property lines facing West First Street and North Ave Street in the general, commercial, heavy commercial CGCH zoning district located at 203 North Ave Street. Mr. Fishin?
All right. Thank you, Chair Cortezy, ZBA members. I know the applicant's been waiting for a while, so I'll run through our last presentation quickly. This is 203 North Ave Street. It's very similar to the request you just approved. It's to allow carport covers at All American Chevrolet on North Ave Street. So that's just on the western edge of downtown. You can see it here. The existing dealership is here and I believe the applicant's here to verify this, but for the same reason, aesthetics and also to prevent hail damage and provide some covers. Nine notifications went out. We didn't receive any in support or opposed. It's 8.59 acres northwest of First Street and North Ave Street. This one's a little different because it's got two front yards. So the applicant is asking, in this case, for two zero-foot setbacks to allow the canopies to go right up to the front property lines. And on these ones, First Street is the bigger right-of-way. It's 30 feet wide, so it's fairly substantial. And then on North Ave, that runs north and south, it's approximately seven feet of right-of-way on that side. So here's a good example. Again, we don't have an official survey, so we're working off GIS map. So approximately, the property line is where that blue guardrail is on Ave Street. And then on the First Street side, again, it's roughly where that blue guardrail is as well. And then on this side, it's, if you go further down, it's where that opening is. So that's what the canopy structures will look like. I believe they're going to be cloth canopies. We have some examples in other municipalities. This is an Audi in Plano. And so I think on this one, staff is comfortable up to a certain point. But one of the problems with their request, and I'll just show you this quickly, is the subdivision ordinance, or excuse me, the original subdivision that was platted has 20-foot unobstructed sewer and water easements along South Bryant and along First Street. I think that becomes the bigger problem here is that Engineering Services had provided us with some correspondence in advance of the meeting and they're not in support of anything within those 20-foot easements, even if the posts of the canopies are outside and the only thing is the canopy roof on top, they still don't want that. And that's for safety. If the sewer line breaks and they need to get in there with their equipment, they're not going to meet that vertical clearance. And so that, we want to make sure we're consistent with, with engineering on that. So given the substantial right-of-way here of 30 feet on First Street, we're okay allowing a 20-foot setback. We'd probably be even okay closer if it didn't have those easements there. On the Bryant side, we're not in support, just given that seven feet. This is a major commercial corridor and an arterial road. And so I think on that side, we definitely would like to keep the 25. We are okay up to 20 over here. The second issue, and I'm just going to go quickly to the last map. They had provided us with this plan. So the one on the left is the city's map, the water and sewer map, and the one on the right is provided by the applicant. There is also a water main somewhere through this property. We don't know where that is. And so if this was approved today, whether it's zero feet, 20 feet, 25 feet back, any canopies, when we, and we, again, that's not for y'all to decide, but if that main goes through here, let's say, they won't be able to put any canopies within 15 feet of wherever that water main is. Unfortunately, it didn't show on our city maps, but Engineering Services had provided that. So just FYI on that. So again, that's our recommendation. We just don't see a justification on North Ave, given that narrow right-of-way. We are okay up to 20 feet on the West First Street side. And again, unfortunately, allowing it any closer than 20 is going to create problems because of those easements. So that's where we're at. If you all approve the partial variance to the 20 feet, we asked one, or two conditions. The applicant obtained all required permits and they will require permits for the canopies. And then two, this is the second comment from Engineering. No portion of any canopy aeroically or physically should be located within 15 feet on either side of wherever that water main turns out to be. Couple notes. The canopies need a river corridor approval. They have submitted that, so that's going to DHRC on August the 19th. Two, there's a piece of, and again, this is just for y'all and for them when they hit permitting. There is a portion of that lot that was never legally platted that we thought was under a different ownership. So they'll, they'll need to do that if they want to put canopies just in that section. There's a little piece on the northwest corner. There's a site triangle issue as well. Some of their canopies on their site plan are in that 30 by 30 triangle. So again, all of this will be dealt with at the time of permitting. Same with maneuvering area. If they're 90-degree angle and they're parking there, they need 24 feet clear. And then the building code requires a 10-foot setback from, from the west and the north property line. So all of those notes, number one, like I said, is going to DHRC and two to five will be dealt with at the time of permitting. So your question today is very similar to the previous case. Are you comfortable with the canopies? And in this case, they're asking for zero feet on both property lines. I'll leave this open for comment.
I have a question. Whatever we approve today, can the river cor, what'd you say, the river corridor?
Yes.
Could they overrule us?
No, not for the setbacks. They only look at the design. So they're just going to look at colors and materials. So if you all approve a setback of whatever X number of feet, then their design approval also would have to make sure they, they're consistent with y'all's decision.
Is there a height to these canopies that we know of?
What I got from the, from their technical drawings, I think it's 7 feet 4 inches. So roughly, at least seven feet vertical clearance.
So if you had a busted, so if you had a busted water main or whatever there, they'd have to come in there with their backhoes and start tearing up that area in order to do the repair and then that 7 foot 4 is not going to be enough clearance.
That's what I understand. That's right.
Okay.
Any more questions for Jeff?
Yeah. 20-foot utility easements along the whole frontage, both sides, Ave and First.
Correct.
And right now, the, the frontage on Ave is only seven foot, but you don't have any structure other than that low bitty blue fence, right? Is that correct? Am I...
Just, just to clarify, so the 20-foot easement starts at the property line, which is the pink line back? So based on the sewer line already being there and Engineering's concerns, they can't put anything back within the 20 feet. That's our position. In front of that pink line and to the street pavement itself, there's that city right-of-way portion. They wouldn't, kind of like the first case with the fence, they can't legally put anything in the right-of-way anyway. But when we make these kinds of decisions, we, if, the narrower the right-of-way, the less likely we're going to support a setback variance because you've got cars coming down this way, turning in and out like that, it's dangerous. So that's only seven feet from the, in the city right-of-way. We had less heartburn on this side because this is almost 30 feet. Unfortunately, because of that 20-foot easement that Engineering had flagged, that, that creates the, the problem. If that 20-foot easement wasn't here, we might have let them go a little further to the front.
Throw up a picture of that, of the... Throw a picture of that blue fence, that blue steel pipe fence. And then tell me, one more, where's that? Keep going. Right there. And in relationship to where that pipe fence is at right now, if the city was to have a water main break or something like that, would they have to go in there and tear out that blue pipe fence in order to go in there and do their work? Or would that be, would that fence be clear of their work area needed?
That's a good question. And I don't believe Engineering is here to answer it today. I'm not sure.
Because if that blue pipe fence is allowed, then...
All I can think of is they would, if they had their trucks, they would come in through there. Because the blue fence doesn't go all the way along. There's an opening here. So they would come in probably through the driveway, I guess, and turn in and do their repair. It's my guess.
I think the biggest concern would be the blue fence on Ave Street.
Yeah, the one on Ave, yeah.
Because the one on Ave sits almost right on...
It's, it's right on, right on the street.
But they could still park their cars there feasibly because they have been all along. They just couldn't put this covered structure there.
That's correct. And again, not to sway either way, but the, the one, that picture in Plano, our director and I had taken a look at that.
Yeah, that, that's...
They actually had, you'll see the cars kind of parked there and then there's a gap of where the canopies go.
Yes.
Probably because again, it was in the setback and they didn't want to approve it.
Right.
Plus, if they, if you set it back that far, you're going to be almost in the used car office. Because there's just not a lot. That's probably why they're parking their cars where they are now because the used car office is just right there.
Yeah. And there, applicants here, if you have any further questions, but I, it's definitely tight for space where they already have their cars.
One side would be easier for us to make some opportunity and the Ave side is kind of really, doesn't have much room at all for anything.
Yeah, and our, even on the First Street side where there's that big right-of-way, our position is only to give them up to five feet in because of that easement. If that easement wasn't there...
Yeah.
Can you go to the drawings? It's kind of levered out. There's this one post and...
It looks like three, isn't that one?
Probably three, okay. Can the, can the canopies be removed easily for, for the...
I'm going to let the applicant probably answer that. That's all right.
Any more questions for Jeff?
Nope.
No, I don't have any.
Open for public discussion?
Hello, my name's Cassandra Huggins. I'm with Dynamic Engineering and I am here to present on...
Speak up a little bit, please.
Oh, sorry. I'm here to speak on the, we are permitting expediter assisting. So we're not the designer of the canopies, although we do understand VPS is a hail canopy manufacturer and we're also coordinating with Lithia Motors, the owner of the dealership. and we're also coordinating with, uh, Lithia Motors, the owner of the dealership. So just a brief summary of the application, like Mr. Fisher said, um, the canopies are due to cover from ha- uh, hail damage, so similar to the previous application. Really looking at the site plan, so if we go back. Forward. Here, so this application, we are going through the building permit right now. So fires taking a look at this, building permit review, um, as well as engineering. So through that coordination, the site plan has changed. There is a required ten-foot offset from the north and the west property line. So some of those c- canopy coverage that you're seeing right now is going to be lost, um, as well as a twenty-foot offset from the existing two building structures. So again, most of the perimeter structures around the building are going to be lost. Um, so we're coming here to request the variance for an encroachment into the twenty-five foot yard setback just due to the existing structures that are on the site as well as the shape of the structure. And as Mr. Fisher had mentioned, a portion of this property, um, is not platted, which is a small portion of the northwest corner. So we're trying to, um, not put canopies in that area as well. So that's what it's led us here today, to request the variance. Um, we have coordinated with engineering, um, and they, as previously mentioned, do not want the canopy structures within the twenty-foot, twenty-five, uh, sorry, twenty-foot easement. And that's due to owning, uh, maintaining the lines. So it's my understanding that's really up to engineering what they're going to allow within their easement. But we come here today from the zoning setback standards. So I actually have a exhibit of what was previously provided that shows a sanitary sewer location as surveyed by the manholes. So you can see how close the setback is, I guess, in relationship to the actual location of the sewer. So I'll pass it out.
So can I ask a question and anyone can answer this? If you're looking at the. The Bryant Boulevard, the little tent things kind of right on the edge, is that really what the concern is? So on Bryant, the.
Thank you.
So again, this site plan is, has been since revised due to the ongoing permit coordination.
So it's really the one that we're having that we would question is the canopies that sit right along the edge, right? I mean, the rest of them look like they fit in no problem.
So, um, these structures here, so if we were to provide, this is the property line, so a twenty-five foot offset would encroach within, um, this canopy as well as, um, this, these canopies on perimeter. So as well as these along North Abe, uh, there is a, the twenty-foot sewer easement along the entire property line. So really, and if engineering's not okay with us encroaching within that easement, we'll stay out of that anyway. Um, so the five-foot encroachment along this w- West First Street, um, is what we're looking at today.
So you said engineering could say you can't have an easement there anyway and those, that whole line of it would be out?
Would be moved up to a twenty-foot offset instead of the twenty-five foot required front yard setback, yes. So, um, and you, a question was brought up about can these structures be remos- removed easily? In the past, um, the owners have entered into hold harmless agreements as far as removing the structures, as well as, I think the structures can be removed if there's proper notice given. Um, I don't want to put a standard timeframe on that because that's not really on our side, but, um, they can be removed. Because it's a, um, concrete foundation, which they can do a spread footing, um, so not as, like a deep pier. And then there's the, um, structure itself, which is steel, and then there's an HDPE mesh fabric that's on top, so it's not an entire metal structure.
So would you explain what you just said? So you're saying the hold harmless would protect the city if they had to go in and do a repair?
The, it's my understanding, which I'm sure you guys could speak to your standard home, hold harmless agreement, that the, the owner's not liable for any damage that you guys would, uh, the city would complete during a repair of the canopy.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to look at the actual agreement we've done and I'm not, I guess, familiar with this one, but, um, yeah, usually when we're going on property to do work, I mean, if we have this easement, I was asking Jeff just now if it's an easement by a plat or an easement by a separate instrument that you would file in the county records and, uh, an easement by a separate instrument would go into all that detail, whereas the plat may not. And if it doesn't, then that may be when we would have like a separate hold harmless agreement like she's talking about. But, I mean, I would need to see it to see what exactly it says and I just, I haven't come up with it yet.
Yeah, because due notice is great, but if there's a burst in the line, there's no way to give you.
Right. And that's kind of when the hold harmless is my understanding when it comes in is, but I, that's in a different municipality too that was, to my knowledge, City of San Angelo has not entered into one for the specific scope.
Can I ask a question? I'm, Aaron with, uh, Planning and Development Services. On your utility exhibit, the green lines, is that showing where the sewer line is actually at?
Yes, per the survey, it's a sanitary sewer manhole.
The what line, I'm sorry, Aaron?
The green. And so has that been presented to city engineering to see if they would modify their easements, which could then this maybe come back once the easements are modified?
We are still in coordination with them regarding, um, the sewer, sanitary sewer as well as the water main that was previously mentioned, the location of that.
I think that'd be a very critical point that you brought up is very, very important. And then, and then two, I keep falling back to this, that existing blue pipe fence that exists there today. If that's, i- if, if the utilities company, if the utility company had to go in there and do repair, if they don't, if they can't, if they're not going to get into that pipe, then what would be the issue if you constructed a cover as it sits right there?
They'd get into the pipe, it'd just be cheaper to repair than, uh, you know, multi, however thousand dollar canopy.
Depending on, but it depends on where this water line is or this utility line is at. If it's extending way out further, then, then it's going to be a good distance away. And it would be almost a mute condition.
Back to Aaron's comment, you, did an engineer to agree to?
Well, I think, and I might ask Brandon to, to guide me on this, but if they are proposing a different easement, I think we'd need to go through an easement process with engineering services to make sure whatever easement is currently is maybe changed?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to know kind of where we stand on the easement, whether, I mean, I think Jeff is saying it was done by plat, so, and, and it says unobstructed easement. So to me, that means you don't put anything in there. Now, if we wanted to agree to something different, then yeah, that would be a separate easement document that maybe the city and them could, um, agree to all these terms and file separately of record. But yeah, we'd need to.
Should that come first?
Would we have to table today?
I mean, I do have some concern that if y'all make a decision that's inconsistent with the easements, then there may be a legal issue there.
Yes.
So I would suggest tabling it.
Yeah, I think so. Until, until we get good clarification.
I- is there any way they could move forward on the other, the partial?
Yeah, because we can have hail anytime, but most of ours is in March, April timeframe frame.
Mm-hmm.
So it's like we have some time to, to deal with this really.
As, yes, and as previously mentioned, now is kind of the time to do these improvements to these lots, so.
I'm going to do it April the first.
Right.
Do you know, ma'am, the ones that are, basically, we're looking at this perimeter along Abe and First Street. Are the applicants, they want to go move forward with all the other canopies? Would, I feel like the city would be willing to say, well, let's get a building permit for those canopies that there's no setback issues and then let's, let's address this easement and start.
The perimeter.
And we'd be, we'd be happy to, to look at something like that for sure from the city side. So they can at least get started on some of those canopies during the winter time.
Like a phase.
That wouldn't require our vote today, though.
I don't think so.
As long as there's no encroachment, it's my understanding that it would be more like a phase process.
We would work with building permits and, and planning on the site plan to show which areas are, are needed and then we can, we can work through there.
Because you're not looking at that many that are in question that are on the.
On the first step, just the first time you'll.
Yeah, and as, so some of these canopies have been removed.
It sounds like it, yeah.
Basically, this area has been since removed through the building permit coordination. This has been removed, um, just due to offsets that have to be provided per building code. Um, and then these surrounding canopies to the building have been removed because there's a twenty-foot offset from existing structures that has to be maintained. So I know this looks like a lot of coverage, um, but this site plan has since been revised, so that's why we're coming to you guys now of, you know, it's getting to crunch time.
And how are you going to know, Jeff, that water main, or is that going to be something that, using those canopies inside the, not on the perimeter, but inside before their main, isn't that going to have to be noted as well?
Yes, and I, I believe, uh, city engineering is working with water utilities to locate that, that main.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess I'll make a motion to table this for further.
And I'll second it.
Um, data and information from the, um, applicant.
Yep.
Have the motion in a second. Any discussion? Let's have the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved, seven zero. Vision report.
Do y'all, y'all want to hold on to these real pretty colors looking things?
I think I've got a couple of them, so I think that's all I need.
Sure? Okay.
At this time, we really don't have anything new to report other than obviously, we're just kind of watching COVID and if there's going to be any executive orders come out of Austin, we don't know that there are, we don't believe that there will be, but we're going to just keep going as we normally go.
Okay. Fill the vacant spots yet?
Uh, we did. We do have, um, I think Jeff actually visited with some folks through his leadership San Angelo class and has passed those, that information on to our city clerk. And so I think we will be getting there sometime this fall. I don't know what that means, but we hope to fill them soon. Wow, was that a?
If I, if I'm correct, I believe we're short one regular member and then two alternates.
I think you're talking about us, staff, right?
Oh, sorry.
I was going.
We, we were thinking about board members. I, I apologize. Uh, but Zach acutely said, oh, no, he's talking about staff. But yes, we have made two offers out to two planners. We anticipate one starting in the middle of this month and one starting, um, the first of September if all their testing and whatever goes well. So. So then we'll be back to full staff and then you get to train them all on what to do.
So we don't have our alternates anymore?
I think we've had a couple of, um, folks, I think Mr. Aguero and.
Morales.
And Mr. Morales have resigned. I don't know how far, how long back, but we do have some openings on this board and we may even on some other boards, but I'm not sure.
All right. Item number seven, next meeting agenda. The next meeting will have the zoning board adjustments scheduled beginning one thirty PM on Monday, September the thirteenth in the City Hall East Matherine Meeting Room. Do we have an agenda? Do we have applicants for the next meeting?
We have a case that was just tabled. Do you know of any other current cases?
Yet.
Adjournment, motion to adjourn?